Friends, thank you. Last warning, please be quiet. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Uh, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
I'm here.
Um, Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Here.
Uh, Counselor Hassan?
Present.
Counselor Teeter?
Here.
Counselor Tivnan?
Here.
And Mayor Beatty?
Here. All right, we will be moving visitor comments underneath the Be Sober graduation for those that are here. Counselor Hassan, can you hear us now?
Yes, we can hear, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Assistant City Manager, any staff items tonight?
No, Mayor.
Uh, Council President, consent, please.
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on tonight's consent?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Please.
So, we are including in the consent agenda tonight the resolution adopting the downtown Beaverton Parks and Open Space Framework Plan. And for those of you who might not be very familiar with it, this is a great vision for how we can create more parks, green space, open space in downtown Beaverton. So it's in our consent agenda. We've talked about it a lot in the past. So we're not going to talk about it much today, but it's just a really big moment for approving this.
Uh, can I get some tech support? I'm hearing... It's muted and I'm still hearing it out of the laptop.
Just turn it off.
You just hit the computer, you think that's it?
No.
It's in the computer.
I thought that was the volume button.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Hassan, please.
Uh, yeah, I don't know that I want to poll yet, but I have a question, so I guess I can start with that if that's easy. Um, this is about Agenda Bill 23212, and I know I gave staff a heads up.
Okay, please.
Awesome. Um, so my big question, so I was looking at the National League of Cities, and it looks like an amazing program. And as I was looking at a lot of their programming, I was trying to understand why we're working with the city-inclusive entrepreneurship network. They had a lot of other programs like climate action, public safety, and I just wanted to get a sense from staff why we had picked that one specifically.
So I can give it a shot, uh, but I believe Mike Williams can also answer if need be. But, uh, we looked at the offerings, we evaluated, uh, with the National League of Cities, the various programs that we could participate in. I believe we might have been limited in that having been successful in the last year with one of them. Um, but we looked at what was going to be the, uh, closest match to City Council's adopted, uh, work plan. And, uh, also with, um, essentially trying to look at what capacity the staff who would participate in the project would have. And that was the closest match. We felt that, uh, it was already work that we were, was closely aligned with work we were planning to do.
Okay, and then just a follow-up, like, I want to be thoughtful of staff capacity and work. Like, do we feel like we have a commitment from staff? Because, and just for counselors who are listening, if you go to National League of Cities, which I know maybe you can't super multitask, but there's just a bunch of really great initiatives. And so I get why we're doing the one, I want to be supportive of staff, but making sure that we can either influence and/or no, and be thoughtful of whether we're going to overly use staff's time. That's my question to you, Dan. How are we feeling about staff time?
Okay. So I think it fits within the, the plan as far as, uh, the economic development staff, and, and we have capacity to do the project. Um, and I think that was a consideration, uh, for us in evaluating what we could put forward was, was the staff workload and the potential for additional outside-of-scope work. And so, you know, we tried to be thoughtful about trying to match what was offered. I would agree with you, there are some amazing programs, and, and part of the benefit of participating in this is that our staff would get to go, uh, to the National League of Cities Conference and, and really understand kind of some of the other work that's out there and maybe bring some of those ideas back as well, so we could maybe apply those as ideas for the future.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, I mean, I'm comfortable supporting this today. I just, I'm on the site, it's like building climate change resilience, economic mobility and opportunity, reimagining public safety. Sounds like staff's really weighed in on that, but I'd like to make sure, like, as we continue to move forward, that we're being thoughtful of staff time. Thanks.
I do want to clarify that staff did weigh in on it. The city manager worked with Mike, so it's the city manager's discretion. I, I want to make sure that, Dan, you said that, right?
Yes, yes, we definitely, we worked with community development department staff, um, you know, worked with existing frameworks that we had as far as choosing what was going to make sense, and also with workload.
Okay, any other discussion on tonight's consent? All right, will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. Our first presentation of the evening is 23215, recognize Be Sober and Behavioral Health Court volunteers. And our own Judge, Judge Britton, is here to kind of kick us off and let us know what we're doing.
Great, so, um...
Mike, please. Sorry. Got to do the mic, they're transcribing.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Juliette Britton, I'm the presiding judge at Beaverton Municipal Court. We run two treatment courts, and we have for many years. And tonight is really to acknowledge, um, all of our community volunteers who have really taken our programs to the next level. So I want to start with, um, Lois Bennett, if she could come on up? Lois Bennett? Lois has Bennett, Bennett has been a, a female mentor for, um, our Be Sober participants. Um, it really speaks to your hard work, Lois, when, oh, it's going to make me cry. We have six graduates here from years ago that continue to support the program. And you continue to support them even after they graduate our program. And so I think that alone really sets, um, sets the stage for, um, all of the impactful work that you're doing in the community, Lois. She came to the presiding judge, um, when I was brand new in 2018 and said, "I heard you have this program. I used to work with incarcerated women, I think I can make a difference, and you really have." Um, you've, I think, worked with at least 20 women. And so basically, she does all this work outside of court, taking women to appointments, support meetings, hosting dinners, um, and really helping people work on their recovery. So we want to publicly recognize her hard work the last few years, so let's give her a hand.
Counselor Tivnan and I can't be in the photo, but we're cheering you on. Congratulations.
All right, our next community partner is Dove Lewis. Do we have Tess Payne here? Our normal, um, or our regular liaison unfortunately was ill tonight, so we're going to present the Dove Lewis to all of our teams. So we'll have all of our dog teams come on up. So... For those that may or may not know, stress can be very, uh, court can be very stressful. And so, um, we partnered with Dove Lewis about six years ago, seven years ago, to provide emotional support for participants, team members, staff in the building who absolutely love, um, all of these emotional support animals. These tireless volunteers, they come to court four times a month, um, always motivated, um, always there to, to provide support. And I think what's important to note is, um, we were the first court in the whole state that Dove Lewis ever partnered with. And because of that, um, outcome, fantastic outcome that we had with our dogs, they've now expanded to several different courts in other jurisdictions. So, per usual, Beaverton was kind of a, um, innovative court in incorporating, uh, different therapy modalities. So we're thrilled that Dove Lewis continues to support our participants and really thank our dog handlers, who, who really consistently come to our program. Um, and so we want to publicly thank you, and these are dogs that you can pet, for those that like animals, so... Yeah, come on over. We have one special gift for our Dove Lewis dogs. Our same-therapy dogs are blood donors for Dove Lewis, you know, because they're an emergency vet. So they always get a, I don't want to say a T-R-E-A-T, um, when, when they donate blood. And so they're having a toy drive, so we have collected donations on Dove Lewis. So congratulations, more toys.
All right, thank you so much. Will you make sure you'll get it? Okay, wonderful. You too, thanks for coming.
All right, last but not least, um, I started in the middle of COVID, a behavioral health court, mental health court, um, with some fantastic city employees, partners. And, um, after the first year, we thought, what else can we do again to take our program to the next level? And we were finding that a lot of our participants, um, didn't have a lot of opportunities to socialize with community members. Many of our participants are, um, struggling to, well, I should say, not struggling necessarily, but, but food insecure, right? Money often, at the end of the month, was low, and we were trying to incorporate providing hot meals for our participants, um, as well as kind of that social interaction. And so we were lucky enough to have, um, our prosecutor, who's here tonight, um, reach out and said, "Hey Judge, I think we have, um, St. Bart's Church, they're looking for a community project, and they want to see how they can support our new program." And so with the leadership of Father Jeff Littlefield and his very loyal, very consistent volunteers for the past year, they have provided hot meals right before court for a lot of our participants, and also provided, more importantly, I think, just a safe opportunity to socialize where people can be themselves and be comfortable and, um, practicing everyday skills. So we appreciate St. Bart volunteers, very consistent, and might I say, excellent cooks, from what I hear. So, um, let's have our St. Bart volunteers come on up.
Counselor Tivnan?
Um, I just wanted to say I really wish that I could be there tonight to help celebrate the volunteers that helped make sure that the Be Sober program is as successful as it is. I have had the opportunity to interact with many of you there tonight and am just in awe of your dedication. Um, and also extremely appreciative that this is the thing that you, that you dedicate your free time to. And, uh, to Judge Britton, thank you for shining a light on the volunteers for the hard work that they do. Um, so to Lois Bennett, and to the dog handlers and our adorable, amazing emotional support pups, and to St. Bart's, thank you very much.
Awesome, we'll, uh, we'll give a couple seconds here to con- clear, uh, clear the chambers. I mean, you're welcome to stay, but, you know, it's just boring government from here on out. Okay, we are, uh, going to start our public comment portion of the evening. Uh, tonight, we'll have two-minute comment sections. We're going to be, uh, doing a hard stop at 30 minutes. And the city attorney has advised me that I need to keep people to two minutes, and so, um, please, uh, the time will be up on the board as you're talking. Uh, as a professional courtesy, we're going to give our county chair, Catherine Harrington, the first up to speak. And then after that, James, uh, Tewilliger, you're on deck, and Lisa Scott.
Good evening, Mayor Beatty, city councilors, both those of you in the room, as well as those of you, uh, attending remotely or participating remotely. I am here, I am Catherine Harrington, the elected chair of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. And I am here tonight to say thank you. Thank you as the Beaverton City Council, and to the mayor, and to your staff as well, for partnering with us to address the crisis of homelessness that we have here in our community. This is a really, uh, tough problem that we are trying to, uh, manage and, uh, work to eradicate the experience of homelessness, to ensure that it is rare, brief, and non-recurring here in our community. I am also a proud Beavertonian, uh, and I am most proud of the work that you do in offering an overnight shelter here in our community, uh, in partnering with the county and our various solutions for engaging our houseless community members. We're trying to assure, ensure that there is no wrong door, that every door is a welcoming door to connect folks with not only safe and stable housing, but also services, so that people are able to get the stability that they need to develop trust and to return to stability in their lives versus having to live with constant worry. We also very much appreciate your acquisition of property as well as your going through the due diligence with your staff to host a permanent shelter. I know it's hard, I know you're hearing from a lot of folks here in our community, so I wanted to take a moment to be here in person to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. James, Lisa Scott's on deck.
Good evening, honorable mayor and esteemed counsel, and although not at all threatening-looking countdown timer. My name is James Tewilliger. Before I begin officially, I need to disclose that I am in fact the chair of the Greenway Knack, but I am here solely in my capacity as a citizen of the city of Beaverton. I wanted to talk a little bit today about that lovely little sign that is on the way into the city council, um, building, which is the sign that points out where all of our sister cities are. Uh, this is a program that, uh, when I moved back to Beaverton after being away for some time, I was looking forward to maybe, uh, looking into a little bit, and I know that it's gone dormant largely because of cost reasons, which by the way, I completely understand. Now, I want to be very clear, I'm not suggesting that we suddenly during a period where we're already looking at having to make difficult cuts, put a big budget item that starts sending people all over the world. I'm in no way suggesting that. But here are a couple things that I know to be true. First, we have, after the pandemic, I think we have as a community, uh, a thirst for connection and building more community. Second, I'm certain that we have a surplus of volunteer time available in our community. Third, we have a tremendous diversity of ethnicity, of economics, of just about every, uh, you know, strata of civilization I can even think of in this city, something that I'm incredibly proud of. And fourth, you never know where programs like Sister Cities can go. And I'm often reminded of what happened in September 2020, when the city of Ashland, Oregon had what was now called the Almeida Complex fire, and five firefighters and the mayor of their sister city, Guanajuato, Mexico, showed up and helped them rebuild. You never know where these types of connections can end up. And so whether it's something simple like having a section in your city that allows us to see news from our sister cities, or something a little bit, uh, bigger as we go into multicultural, uh, center building and so forth, I think this is something that we can in fact make some small and low-cost strides in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you for having me today. Uh, my name is Lisa Scott, and I'm a freshman right now, I have two kids that go to school. Oh, thank you. And I'm just wondering where we're at from the meeting that we had on, on October 3rd regarding the shelter and the issues that we've been having. I'm wondering if anyone's investigated, uh, how many emergency calls have been made since the start of school, um, including an incident that happened on October 6th where there was a partially clothed man, um, actively using drugs across the street from the preschool let-out at 3 o'clock, near the, um, outhouses that we've asked the representative that came to our parent association meeting if those could be moved. Um, I'm just wondering if there's been any feedback, solutions? Yesterday, I drove past a shelter at 8:30 in the morning, and there were a lot of people out front of the front-covered way, not the back where there's a little bit more space by the school, but out front. And I'm very nervous that it's soon going to be overrun and overcrowded, and what the solution is to that as the weather gets worse and more and more people need shelter. And if they have the resources to manage that amount of people that are coming. And then I also saw news footage of the last meeting that we had, and I was glad that the AI situation was addressed. Um, I'm sad that our testimony wasn't addressed at, on that news, but, um, again, I just urge you to move the shelter, even if it's a temporary severe weather shelter. There are probably, you know, spaces available within town. Thank you.
I think it's Julia Jones? And then up next will be Monique?
Hi there, thanks for having me tonight. Uh, my name is Julia Jones, I'm also a St. Cecilia parent. I have a son in first grade and a daughter in third grade. Um, I'm going to let some of my fellow parents continue to address our concerns about the shelter. My concern specifically regards controlled substance legislation. Um, we obviously have no way to completely verify this, but we have multiple witness accounts of what we believe are controlled substance usage within very close proximity to our school, as Lisa just referenced. And, you know, as a school community, we obviously believe that we have a, we have not only a call to help our houseless population, but also a call to protect our children. And the potential of one of our children being exposed to a controlled substance, specifically fentanyl, is becoming increasingly worrisome to us as parents. As I know you're well aware, Portland passed an emergency ordinance last month that would prohibit the consumption of controlled substances if and when the state legislature amends state law. Our wish for you guys as a council would be to make the same moves, um, and to put some protections in place so that if the state does change the law effective immediately, it would be illegal to consume controlled substances out in public, on public grounds, with the goal of protecting our children in a way that we as their parents cannot protect them. Are you allowed to give any, to answer or give any feedback?
No.
Okay, okay, thanks very much for having me.
Uh, but we can have staff follow up with you.
Okay, that'd be wonderful, thank you.
Megan? Or sorry, Monique first, then Megan.
Hi, my name is Monique, I was here about two weeks ago, um, at the last council meeting. I actually called into the meeting after I left, my son had to get home for dinner. Um, I've been a part of the Beaverton community since I was a child myself. I attended St. Cecilia's school. My father served for Beaverton Police when the police station was located across the street where the library is now. Um, I wanted to address a comment that I heard Mayor Beatty make towards the end of the meeting in some form or fashion. Um, we had delivered some very emotional information, the things we have seen and some reports that have been made. And there was a comment made at the end of the meeting that kind of, um, alluded to the fact that not everything that we stated was true. And I think it was specifically in regards to a gentleman that had passed across the street from the school. And while I don't think the information had been released yet as to what was the cause of death, I just want to reiterate that I think it's totally irrelevant. I just want to ask you all some questions, and I want you to think about it as parents, as uncles, as aunts. Have any of your children in your proximity had someone die across the street from their school? Have any of your children seen drug use and drug transactions across the street from their school in this school year? Have any of your children gone across the street to the public library to do homework and to get some help from other teachers and students and had to walk around police activity because of drug activity right there in the parking lot of the, the Beaverton Library? There are also several things that are not getting reported. My husband went to pick up my son early for a dentist appointment a couple weeks ago. There was a gentleman in the St. Cecilia parking lot refusing to leave. He was belligerent, he was asking where the free food was at the top of his lungs, and he approached my husband's truck. My husband's six foot eight, he's about 300 pounds, and he's former Navy. So as soon as he stepped out of the vehicle, the gentleman decided it was time to move on. And my husband told him, "You don't belong here, you need to go across the street." But it was clear what he was there for. So I just want to be clear, these things are happening, not all of them are getting reported, and we just appreciate you acknowledging that we've tried this, it's not working, it's time to make some fixes. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
Hello, my name is Megan. And I just wanted to follow up also on some of the rebuttals that I heard when I watched back the city council meeting. And I do feel like it's unprofessional and inappropriate to call experiences that you weren't present for exaggerated or not factual. Um, I think any appointed leader of our community should not discredit, degrade, or mock anybody who is here and has something to say. The individual that passed away in front of the library was a known drug addict, a known alcoholic, somebody who was homeless and frequented that shelter. So to say, yes, we don't know for sure because tox results aren't back, but he wasn't ebriated at the time that he passed away. Whether somebody else took his drugs that he may or may not have had is up in the air. But I think to deflect from the situation that a known homeless individual who is a substance abuser died in front of the library across the street from the school is something that should be noted and also heard. Mayor Beatty, you took, you said you took under great advisement the current location of the shelter, and I just wonder who that advice was with? I think that it's great the new shelter is going to have a good neighbor agreement. I don't know why that wasn't done for us. I think that it's something that... I think that it's something that when the shelter got quietly opened as a long-term shelter, it wasn't something where we were ever approached. Back when it first opened, we were, but not after COVID and everything that has transpired since. From August 21st through October 12th, there's been 947 calls for service to the Beaverton Police Department to respond within half-mile radius of our school. That's 947 calls in 53 days. 18 calls on average in a half-mile radius around our school. That's just the ones that are reported. On Thursday, October 5th, since we've been here, we had two students who went to the library after school and were offered drugs and wanted, asked if they wanted to purchase them. When they said no, they were harassed. On October 6th, at dismissal, as they mentioned earlier, two men in underwear were inhaling drugs of some sort strung out on the grass across the street from our school. We've had a man who exposed himself with a walker and urinated in front of our preschoolers as they were leaving.
Thank you. It's, your two minutes is up.
Is there any way that I can ask for an extension?
No. Okay, we are on to our next agenda bill item. 23216, PowerPoint Climate Action Task Force Report. We'll have our team come up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. My name is Kevin Boylan. I am a staff liaison for the Climate Action Task Force. And I would like to introduce some members of the task force that are in the audience tonight. If you want to stand up or wave, you can. And I'd also like to introduce the presenters for this evening to give their annual presentation to you on the Climate Action Task Force's activities from this year. I'm joined by Jennifer McDonald, Sayad Kasim, and Rebecca Shell. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to them to run through their presentation for you.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving us the space and time and hearing us out as we come to convey our collective thoughts over the court that we have culminated over the course of this year. So just to reiterate and remind everyone the role of the Climate Action Task Force, we are designated to act in an advisory capacity to the City Council, which includes enhancing the City Council's awareness from a community perspective as it, when it comes to climate change, assisting the City Council in devising appropriate strategies and informing policy, that policies that they make, and then provide any appropriate feedback on the impact of programs. So just quickly reiterating our objective. I think we wanted to start by reiterating something that we had shared last year in our readout. This is December 2022, where we came in and kind of gave some observations at the end of our first year as a task force and also made some strong recommendation, and we wanted to highlight the fact that those recommendations and observations still stand valid and true. These include recognizing the fact that the city is not structurally positioned, and there doesn't seem to be a fundamental mechanism to operationalize climate work, whether it's funding the work or tracking and tracking any kind of progression of it. To this day, we are not capable of creating some kind of insight and proper reporting mechanism in it. There is also the lack of ability in being able to, you know, assess the resourcing, the allocation of resources, which aligns with, again, one of the City Council priorities about proactively responding to climate change. And these are things that we want to continue to highlight. I think one of our recommendations, if you might recall, was creating a dedicated climate action fund, and then again, structuring it so that we have better mechanisms and better visibility in terms of what's coming in and how it's being used and what's going out. And on, so this year, we have continued to meet monthly and leverage the various members of our task force to progress on our work. We have engaged with the public at community events like Bike Beaverton, Sunset High School Climate Summit, amongst others, as a means of, again, being more community-driven and community-informed. We also hosted a half-day internal workshop leading into our readout and some of the findings and sort of the collective opinion of the task force. We were also intentional about requesting early audience with the City Council this year because we know the City Council has on schedule their off-site leading into the next fiscal budgeting cycle. And we wanted to come in front of you with, again, our recommendation and readout so that you go into that off-site informed and educated and empowered with the right level of detail. We were limited in our project engagement owing to various factors. We were also intentional about trying to engage more with the City Council, which was something that we had heard and wanted after last year's readout. So as a part of that, we initiated a counselor engagement series where we had the opportunity to meet with a lot of you coming to our monthly sessions and having a more informed and open dialogue. We also successfully did a lot of work in cultivating a rubric that informs how we engage with different projects and different members of the city staff and giving it a more structured mechanism and method, and that's what I will ask Rebecca now to speak to.
So one thing that we just highlighted a couple of moments ago was the need to really track progress and provide feedback to projects and programs that come to meet with us, and we're really focused on doing that more going into 2024 because we feel that, you know, highlighting the Beaverton City Action Plan and the goals covered within are the ability to track the achievement of those goals or progress related to those goals really comes down to being able to track the ability of projects that come to meet us, moving forward and their ability to meet those goals. So what we've created that we're going to be implementing moving forward, we've trialed it once and will be using it going forward, is a pre-meeting questionnaire that kind of allows us to delve into how a particular project or program manager is coming to meet with us, how they, how that particular program really is related specifically to goals as laid out in the B cap, and then a consistent slate of topics that we can talk about inside of our meeting, and that will allow us to really provide feedback, consensus-driven feedback inside of our meeting that can inform the project manager as a way to improve its ability to meet the B cap goals. So the five topics, you know, the questions as specifically related to those topics will, of course, necessarily vary according to what program or what project is coming to speak with us. But we're trying to be consistent in how we approach this. So these are the five topics that we'll be covering. We hope that we can encourage more projects and more programs to come and visit us by being upfront with what we're trying to accomplish. And then the second part of this goal is to be transparent with the feedback that we give, both to you, but also to Beaverton City residents. If we can provide trackable feedback, then hopefully we can encourage trackable results.
Thank you.
Hello again, City Council. We've met with several of you over the course of the year, and I thought I would take a moment to recap some of the things that we learned. From our meeting minutes, I created a Word cloud. It's being displayed up on the screen, and it pulls out one of our biggest topics that we discussed with you all, which was budget and funding. Over the course of the year, we spoke with you about the climate crisis, our concerns, hopes, and what it means for the City Council to make something a priority. We found several points to highlight for you. First was that the city's budget and priorities are not necessarily reflective of the goals of the current city councilors. There was some hesitance to implement and fund big changes that are needed to meet the demands of our emergency situation, and there was an unclear understanding of the working relationship between the task force and the council, which we hope our slide two has helped address. Next year, we'd like to continue our engagement, and we'll, we'll hope to build a more collaborative relationship by clarifying our roles and sharing our work on an ongoing basis. We'll seek to do this by providing the feedback generated from the project engagement tool Rebecca just explained and supporting the role of the council liaison. We hope that this will lead the council to consider our feedback on the potential impact of proposed climate action-related policies, programs, and activities as they come up for discussion in meetings and work sessions. We believe that we can achieve our climate goals by operating under a shared framework. We want to do this so that we can help achieve our council priority as climate as a priority. Based on our experience, we're finding it difficult to tell if the feedback from the task force are being considered when business is conducted before council. The current model of reporting to you on an annual basis like we are now is too late for us as a city to take meaningful action on climate. And we think meeting with you is probably unrealistic. We strongly emphasize the need for a new working model with a clearly established council liaison role, which will help us learn and evolve more quickly.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think I just want to take a brief pause. Like, we have said a lot, and I know we're, we still have a couple of slides where we're going to say some more, but I wanted to give everyone breathing room. Again, standardizing our engagement mechanism, very critical. Reconsidering what this operating model of how we inform and engage with the council or inform as you engage with different projects, another key recommendation as well as an observation. I think this one, next one, in terms of both an observation and a strong recommendation is the fact that we, we do strongly urge the council to consider allocating more resources. The sustainability program at the city is currently staffed at about 1.3 FTE. We fully recognize the fact that we are in a difficult financial climate. We recognize the different, difficult decisions that the climate, that the City Council has had to make in the previous budgeting cycle, and that continues to persist as a challenge. There is no denying that, but we also know that there are opportunities with the IRA, the BIL, and other funding opportunities or grants that can be pursued. We do believe that dedicating more resources to be able to pursue those opportunities will hopefully create more, more room for us to go after funding, and that's partially the reason we are recommending, again, allocating more dedicated resourcing. I think to kind of drive the point home, we, we really wanted to iterate that this is an unprecedented event. Climate change is not something that we have faced as a community, as a race, as a human civilization. So we cannot look to use the tools that we have had in the past to solve this problem because this is a problem like any other. So we have to be creative, we have to be strategic, and we have to think outside the box, and that's really what we're asking for, that leave no stone unturned when you are looking for creative ways to fund and allocate resources to this work. Kind of recapping where we are in terms of, you know, again, strategic engagement framework, re-establishing the, or re-examining the operating model with the City Council and the need for new resources. We wanted to kind of look ahead as to what we're working towards going forward. I let Jennifer get started with.
So, so next year, I think we'll have a busy year on the Climate Action Task Force. We're planning to continue engagement with projects, those that want to come speak with us voluntarily, and those that might not necessarily choose to present. We really would like to speak with everybody who has projects on their plate that do pertain to climate. And we will also be excited to play a role in the development of the Beaverton's Climate Action Plan, version 2.0, and we're really looking forward to that.
Yeah, and then building on, again, something we highlighted, which was community engagement. We're looking to deepen that community engagement with more participation partnerships, such as partnering with NACs and other local bodies that are looking to get more involved in doing work related to climate action and climate change. So, again, continuing to drive that. And then we are also hoping to partner with events and other city staff and teams to, to assess how we can imbue more climate initiatives or green initiatives as an opportunity to educate the public and, and really inform them of what could be and how we could be organized.
This is a pretty ambitious slate of activities, and we recognize that. It's really an effort on the part of 12 citizens in our spare volunteer time to, to encourage City Council to really assist us in desiloing climate and sustainability work from this 1.3 FTE worth of effort and work. And, you know, this really, what it comes down to is culture change. We really need, and we are asking for your assistance in changing the culture of how climate action and sustainability are viewed at a departmental and project level. We need everyone to rethink how to, how to change, how to consider, how to bring in climate and sustainability concerns at every level of this, and we can only do so much from our end. We need partnering. You'll see partnering in every point on this slide. We need partnership, and we really thank you for your assistance on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. I'll just give you a couple things. One, I know the IRA is important to all of us, myself included. I've been to DC multiple times talking about it. When things come through the Senate side of the House and our federal government, they tend to give money to states, which is what they did. So the IRA didn't come through the House. When, when it comes through the House, it often goes to congressional districts because they want to say, "Look at all the money we're spending," where the Senate tends to feed it down through the state. So our climate action is going to get wrapped up in Metro's plan, so the funding is going to come through the state to Metro to us. And so what we had hoped for in the early days is that our city that is able often to get direct federal funding because of the way our structure that we would be able to get it directly funded to us, that's not how it's happening. And so what we're waiting for from Metro is like how the money is going to be dispersed. And so like I hear you on the staffing and being ready, and like, I continue to argue that we are the only city with an adopted climate action plan, and we have good things in there that can be funded. Like, please don't like leave it in bureaucracy, but I just want to let you, like, that's where we are with that particular piece. We also are having an in-depth, where we want to have a conversation at the council retreat about how boards and commissions function. So I think what you're expressing is frustration that other boards have expressed as well, and when we shifted our form of government, we didn't really shift how the boards and commissions were going to work and operate. So I don't have a clear answer for you. I'm just letting you know, like, it's on our agenda. We are, we're hearing it, and we're kind of wrestling with like what is next to make sure that your work is meaningful, because we don't want you to continue to volunteer and feel like it's not being heard. And the last point for you is like, you know, we desperately try to get the tree code on the map, and then the state government hit us with a whole bunch of mandates, and I was in Salem testifying. If you make us do this, the same planners that are doing the tree code now have to advert and go over here. And so that decision was taken from the council basically by the state-level government. So I don't want it to sound like an excuse. I just want you to know, like, we're not just, we're not, we are in it and we are trying to figure out a way. I want to be honest that I don't think it's possible to give you a pot of money to spend and like work on it. I just think with our budget situation, I don't know if that is right now. The way Portland did it was through a new tax, and so there are other ways to do it. I don't know in this current structure if we can do it that way. Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, just, when was the Climate Action, was that 2019? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was before we did the change in government, correct? And I was just thinking, as, as I saw your slide on B cap two, I wonder if, like, just hashing the same thing again is probably going to create the same frustrations, and I wonder if there's a way for us to rethink it through our current form of government. Right? Like, I know Lacy, I know Mayor Beatty, I know you would push this through, right? If you were, if we were in the old form of government, you know, you have, you would have more authority and more ability to do that. I know, I know it's a priority for a lot of us, but I just think about maybe as we think about B cap two, if, if we end up working towards that, we need to look at the reality of the, the new city charter and what we can actually realistically accomplish between this form of government and the last, and optimize it that way, too. That's, that's just something that popped in my mind. Thank you for this, though. It's very important.
Counselor Hussin?
Yeah, I won't repeat my fellow colleagues' comments, but I do want to say, like, I- Yeah, I won't repeat my fellow colleagues' comments, but I do want to say, we hear you. I know that this is very much on my mind. I am hopeful that during the council retreat, we can have a really honest conversation around how we set up boards and commissions to be successful because y'all came in at a time of so much change, and that's just been probably hard on you all. I will say, Rebecca, you made a comment about silos, and I can't emphasize enough how much I hope our council takes that and thinks through, how do we weave climate throughout the city? I brought this up before. DEI work has to be embedded throughout all of the city departments. I believe that anything related to climate action also needs to be. It can't sit on an individual that's doing the checkboxing. It has to be a collective of our staff. And so I would just say to our council, I challenge us to think about ways that we can ensure that as we do events or as we do some of these things, that we are doing those with that lens. I don't doubt that our staff isn't trying, but ensuring that we continue to send that message to our city manager and to our city leadership is really critical because those little things of how we do events or how we, whether there's some sort of, like, that programming that is built into the event that doesn't have an additional cost. Like, I do think that there's a future there. So thank you so much for coming and presenting.
Counselor Tivnun?
Yeah, thank you. I think part of this, the frustration is, I think there's a lot of that around this topic because we're trying to turn this gigantic cruise ship and wanting it to turn faster. And I think if we all work together, we're going to be able to make more progress in a more methodical and efficient manner with forward momentum. And right now, there's a disconnect with this task force. And I'm just going to be completely candid here. I'm frustrated. We've heard from you twice, and in both presentations, it's a list of the things that you're not getting, and there's no recommendations in it. There's no advisory other than, we can't do this until these things happen. And I would like to see there be more frequent interaction with the task force so that we can get this information and work together to try and clear these roadblocks that are preventing the work from happening. But I think there also might need to be a look at the actual call to action that was written for the task force because there's something that seems to be missing in it for me, and that's the Climate Action Plan. It's not even mentioned in it. And this plan has over 80 different recommendations, not all of which can be done just by Beaverton, but there's several that can be done by us, or several that can be done by our community members. And my initial thought was that the task force was going to take that action plan, which to me, it didn't really seem like a plan, it just seemed like a list of great ideas, and create some sort of implementation plan around it. Like, here's what we're going to do in year one. Here's what we could do by year five. Here are some recommendations that we could take through the city, to public events. Here's what we could apply to internal projects that the city is working on or ways that the city can better plan for future investments in energy-conscious decision-making. And I haven't seen any of that yet. And so just honestly, I'm very frustrated by that. And I don't think that is a mark on the task force at all. I think the task force is comprised of people that are extremely passionate about this and have their eyes wide open and are seeing what's happening out in other communities. But I don't think that we've done the work of providing enough definition to this task force to empower it to be as successful as it can be. And I think that that has to happen because to the point that Counselor Hussin made, and I think Counselor Duggar, you might have mentioned it too, and the mayor, there's not going to be a lot of money at the order of magnitude that I saw, the dollar amount that was asked for the first time around. I just, I don't think that's feasible. And if that isn't feasible, what is? And so if it's not, if that's not the path that is going to make the most sense, what can we do to not have that be a complete stop to this work? How can we get around it together? And I wish that I could couch that in some sort of way that makes it easier to hear. I know that's not easy to hear, but that's my impressions on this, and this is so critical that we get this task force in a place where it feels very successful every single month, feels like it's making progress, and feels like it has conduits to get the information back to us so that we can use that to inform the decisions we're making. And that just hasn't happened since it started. And I'd like to be a part of the thinking at the retreat and when we talk about boards and commissions of how to better set you up for success to do that and give you a better idea of what it is that we, what we were envisioning for this task force. And I think that it is going to be a conversation amongst the counselors of finding some share alignment on what that is. So those are my thoughts on it, and I apologize for how harsh that might have sounded.
Thank you, everyone, for that feedback, and obviously a lot for us to take back and reflect upon. Really want to work backwards. I think to your point, Counselor Tivnun, we recognize the engagement and we recognize the gaps, and that's why we had reached out and asked counselors to come and attend. So it's a matter of, again, priority and whether or not those counselors made the time. So that has to be taken into account, and I understand that everyone's hearing frustration, but nobody is recognizing it as an urgency. We had the hottest July on recorded history this year. We had the hottest September in recorded history. And I understand turning the ship and all of that, like, well and good, but we are literally running out of time. So what we're trying to impress upon you is the urgency. It is not the frustration, it is the urgency that we must act now and we must act fast and recognizing the limitations of our current system, whether or not, how funding is rolling. Like, it's all well and good, and it's all valid. Nobody can invalidate that reality, but that's why we said we have to be creative. We have to think differently. We can't keep going at it as, like, this is how we have to come to you so that you guys can make progress. No, you have to work with us to rethink about it and reframe this whole problem. Like, we can't chip away at it piece by piece in a way that the current bureaucracies work. It will not allow us to make the kind of progress that we need to. Again, it's the urgency. It is not the frustration, and I want to really reiterate that. And that's what we wanted to really emphasize, is that there is a sense of urgency, and we're making the recommendation, but we're also demanding that you think differently, you do more. So, please.
Can I add to that? To be clear, I don't actually think that we are asking for money. We are asking that city council put the money behind the plan that the previous city council office has put into place in 2019 and written into our charter that we are assisting in redoing for 2024. We're not taking it upon ourselves to redo this plan. It's written in that it gets updated in 2024. You know, every dollar that gets spent on this kind of work now, it's well-established, saves dollar over dollar over dollar into the future. This is an investment in Beaverton's future, in Oregon's future now, and I would encourage you to consider it as an investment into the city and not giving us a pot of money. We're not asking for money, we're asking for you to invest it. Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Bill 23217, the WIFIA program update, and it looks like we have Jeff Hunsinger
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. I'm Matthew Rawls, a management analyst in Public Works, working on the WIFIA program here at the city, and I am joined by Jeff Hunsinger, the city engineer. And as you can see on the first slide, I'm here to update you on the WIFIA program. So first up, we'll cover an overview of the WIFIA program, and then we'll go into scope, schedule, budget, kind of the original to where we are now. And then at the end, if you have any questions, it'll be time for that. So for those out there who don't know what the WIFIA acronym is, it stands for the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. And it was established in 2014 to provide long-term, low-cost loans to accelerate investment in water and wastewater infrastructure. The city's loan with the EPA closed in January of 2021, so we're coming to the third anniversary of the program here at the city. And WIFIA loans in general are designed to cover up to 49% of eligible project costs. And in our case, that amounts to about $81 million for our total WIFIA program budget of $165 million. And any cost overages over that $165 are fully funded by the city from other sources. So WIFIA will not fund more than $81 million. The construction period of the loan is seven years, which for us ends in calendar year of 2027. And next, we have analysis of our scope changes. July 2021 was the last time council was updated on our WIFIA program, and at that time, we were looking at about a $26 million overage already from the pandemic, and that's the main issue. To mitigate this increase, staff has identified four projects that we could delay, due in part to slower development in the Cooper Mountain region. And so we requested to the EPA that we drop these projects off of our program list, and they agreed in May that we could. And those projects are the Cooper Mountain Solar Array, ASR number six, Cornell Road, Maine, and Tile Flat Floridation and Pump Station. These projects will no longer be eligible for WIFIA funding, but we are going to throw them back into the CIP prioritization process and to be incorporated into a future capital improvement plan. And for all other projects, staff is closely monitoring scope creep, and any increases in those have to be approved by the Public Works Director. This is the map of the original program with all of the projects in there, and this next one is current. It might be kind of hard to see, but we pulled out the four that were removed, and then in that 3684 North Transmission Entertie Connections, we've grouped those three highlighted in kind of purple. Those went out to bid with CIP 4143, the NTLI. So those all went out to bid together and will be constructed under one contract. Next is a schedule update. And as of June 30th of this year, which is the most recent report that we've sent to the EPA, 84% of our projects are either in planning, design, construction, or have already been completed. So that's the one on the right. The one in the middle was, encapsulates our last fiscal year, 2223. And of the projects that were in the process, 75% were in construction, and then the remaining 25% were either in planning or design. So this one, again, kind of hard to see, it's kind of hard to put a whole lot of information on a slide, but this is the original schedule. It's obviously been updated, so kind of one thing, I guess, to look at is that fiscal year 2627 is the end of our WIFIA program, and the current schedule, still everything will be completed by 2627, but due to the pandemic, we've had to kind of push some things back. And a couple of things to note, we've had the four projects removed, which you can see there in red, four have been complete, and then Purple Pipe, a favorite of everyone's, it's kind of had some delays. So it was originally supposed to be finished in fiscal year 2122, but now we're looking at fiscal year 2425. Walker Road Phase Two's delay has come off of Washington County's end. We've done an IGA with them, and they're managing that, but due to staff unavailability and their other project prioritization, we've seen a delay on that. And then some good news, if you can look at it that way, 209th Pump Station is actually being accelerated because we need it operational sooner in order to take advantage of Willamette Water Supplies project there. And the last bit is our budget analysis. And then, again, more of the same, might be kind of hard to read, but what is easy to see is how much red there is. The red signifies a 25% or more increase in budget, and it's actually kind of what our other regional partners and agencies are seeing, too. So we're not alone in that, and a lot of it is, of course, due to pandemic problems. But at the bottom there, if you can kind of make that out, in the middle, we're still about $6.4 million over our original $165 million target. But again, pulling those four off, that number in July of '21 was at $26 million. So if you kind of extrapolate that, it'd probably be even more than that today. So that's one way we've kind of clawed back some of those overages. And then, kind of the reasoning behind some of this is the heavy hitter increases kind of came from Purple Pipe and our ASR 5 and Sexton Mountain Pump Stations. Purple Pipe saw an increase due to both inflation and policy direction, and those increases are about 75% over the original project estimation. And then most of ASR 5 and Sexton Mountains' cost increases come from scope changes to meet the current needs, current and future needs of the city, which in case of a seismic event and we have an emergency, that will actually be a command center for the city if need be. So those weren't in the original scope. They were added in, and it inflated the price a lot, but very important improvement. Also, for the inflation, as you can see here, if you total those up, it's just under 13% since October of '21. And then right before council meeting, I ran the numbers since October of 2020, and that number by itself was about 20%. So in three years, we're looking at 20%. You can see it's kind of cooling off there with the most recent for the October '23 number of .9%. But after going through the two previous years totaling about 19%, we're still kind of reeling from that. And then for the national-level supply chain disruptions, I'm going to pick on Purple Pipe again. One extreme example from that is our electrical transistors, or transformers, sorry. We're seeing lead times on those from between 50 and 100 weeks. So that's an extreme example, and not everything's following that, but that really kind of delays the project, and then time equals money. And then just to kind of wrap things up, despite the table on the right showing that almost 80% of our projects are at some level being over budget, the WIFIA program as a whole has still been a success for the city and its residents. It's accelerated the construction of important water infrastructure with the cost savings to our ratepayers. The estimated cost savings is still, we're looking at about a $30 million number, and that's versus the lifetime of bonding that out with water bonds, too. And with that, if you have any questions?
I do think you made the text so small that we don't have any questions because I actually have no idea what you just presented to us.
That was strategic.
Blah, 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 Purple Pipe, spent all the money, noted. Counselor Dieter.
Yeah, I've got one question. It's about the $6 million overage estimate for the total cost of the projects by the end of the program. I assume the overage would be covered by our own rates and fees? Or is there a different approach that we're looking at with that? What does that mean for us?
That's being looked at by finance and it's going to be wrapped up in a future bond, I believe is the plan for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, gentlemen, I think you got off easy tonight. Thank you for joining us.
I have to stay.
You saved your voice for the next one.
Okay, next one. 23218 Major Street Transportation Improvement Program. Denny Road Widening Project Preferred Alternative. Neither of you guys are the people listed on my run of show. So I guess you're both taking this one?
Yeah, there's a little bit of a last minute change in this one. Perfect, thank you. Good evening, obviously, Mayor and Councilors. I'm Jeff Hunsaker, City Engineer. Oh, I need to get closer. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Jeff Hunsaker, City Engineer, joined tonight by Tim Elsie, our Public Works Director. And I'm going to be talking about the MSTIP Denny Road Improvements Project that's being designed by Washington County, but it is for a city road and the preferred design alternative that we've come to. As the mayor pointed out, we're not the original presenters that we're supposed to be here tonight. Mark Rao, our city lead, came down with a bit of an illness. So you're definitely getting the understudy for tonight's performance and I apologize for that. But we'll do the best we can. So the adopted MSTIP 3E project for Denny Road is a widening of the road to three lanes and it adds bicycle lanes and sidewalks. So with that as our starting point, we had to go through this preliminary design process. First, we had to set our design standards, which we're using the city's engineering design manual as well as the county's design and construction standards. But since it is a city road, we're more using the city's engineering design standards. We're also trying to incorporate the complete street policy concepts from the policy that was recently adopted by the city council. We've had a public engagement process that's included open houses, meeting with the school district, presenting to Bicycle Advisory Committee, as well as some one-on-ones with the council to get some feedback. The open houses, we did both before we began construction, the design, to get as much feedback from the neighborhood as possible. And also open house after we came up with some design alternatives to give additional feedback on some alternatives that they can see. After getting that feedback, we moved to refinement, to getting to a preferred alternative, which is kind of a hybrid of some of the others that we're going to be sharing tonight. And then we've also developed a 30% cost estimate, which is $7.4 million for the construction costs. All in, when you include design and construction management, it's about $9.25 million. Keeping with the theme of small texts, I just wanted to share that there was an alternatives analysis matrix that was done, looking at those alternatives and then also doing the preferred alternatives. And really, it's a way to summarize all the key variables that we were looking at when we were looking at this design. Some of the things that we had to look at were impacts to the adjacent properties, right-of-way acquisition, changes in the type of bike and ped facilities, impacts to trees, and changes in the roadway width. So the preferred alternative has these key features. It includes pedestrian bicycle facilities in each of the travel directions. It addresses main traffic pinch points with the addition of turn lanes at key points in the corridor only. It enhances pedestrian crossing at 103rd Avenue and has some new bus stop facilities. This alternative is the least impactful alternative to significant grow trees and trees overall. It also includes lighting, drainage, and utility improvements. And as an alternative that tries to meet in the middle as much as it can, it also includes the most design exceptions for all the standards. So I'm going to kind of walk through the project from west to east and just share some of those design decisions that were made along the way. Not going to be able to cover them all. But the first is, if you can see, we have a curb-tight sidewalk here on the south side of the road for this portion. The reasoning behind that is we're actually working with limited right-of-way there. And if we move any further south, we would actually remove the ability to park in the driveway of those homes there. So by adding a bicycle lane and the sidewalks, we're really limited on the space we have. You can also see in this portion on the western side of the project, we have turn lanes. Those turn lanes are warranted for 105th Avenue, 104th Avenue, and Oakwood. But they're not warranted for some of the other intersections further to the east. Looking at this portion here, you can see the RRFB or Enhanced Pedestrian Crossing at 103rd. That was the location that really stood out as meeting the best place to put it to connect these two sides of the neighborhood. You can also see on the north side, the bike lane actually drops away and we move to a multi-use path where, when the turn lanes begin. We actually looked at keeping that bike lane through there. But what happened was it had more impacts to the significant grow trees in this area, including some white oaks. So the alternative that we went with was moving on to a multi-use path that can snake around those trees a little bit better. And a potential side benefit to some of these larger green spaces is we might be able to plant larger trees than normal for street trees because of the additional volume of green space there. But we're not sure yet and we're working with our arborists to see if that's a possibility for us. Again, this portion of the project, you see that the turn lanes are no longer warranted. So they've dropped off and we've gone back to just a two-lane section. You can't really see it from this higher elevation view, but the travel lanes have been dropped down to 11-foot lanes. And that allows us to have two-foot buffers for the bike lanes now. So they're not just five-foot bike lanes, they're a five-foot bike lane with a two-foot buffer on each side. You can also see on the north side here, we're taking advantage of some improvements that were done in the recent past and not doing additional work to save, both save money and to have less impacts to the natural resources and wetlands that are shown in that green space on the north side of the road. And then kind of finally, as we get to the far east end of the project, we have a very narrow bit of right-of-way to work with. You see that the curb-tight sidewalks come back. And we also end up, in the current design, we end up dropping the bike lane when we're moving eastbound. Cyclists would have the opportunity to either merge with traffic or transfer to the sidewalk in this area. But that's still an area that needs some refinement in the design. There's been a lot of discussion around that with the community, at the Bicycle Advisory Committee, about what are the benefits to having that left turn lane and reducing queuing distance, or queuing space that could block driveways in the future? Or keeping that bike lane through there and allowing the queuing to go back further? So that's a refinement we're still looking at. We're also evaluating if, or ask the team to evaluate if there's some interim solutions that can be done that might make some changes now that would allow the bike lane to stay, but would allow us to still make the full improvements so we wouldn't have to go back into this area to do, to open it back up again in the future for another change. So that's something that we're still looking at. But ultimately, this project provides virtually all the components you need for bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicular traffic, but is still trying to mitigate impacts to the properties and natural resources. I will be perfectly honest, none of these improvements are perfect. That's pretty typical when you're trying to meet multiple priorities with limited right-of-way and then being in a built environment. So we've had to really find that balance. And we're going to continue refining that with further feedback from the community and yourselves tonight if you would like to give it. But next steps, we're going to go back out to that committee for the feedback on this preferred alternative that allows us to further refine that design. We're hoping to have a final design completed in fall of 2024. That's expected. There could be some things that slow it down still, with an ultimate construction timeline in the year of 2025, 2026. So with that, I'll...
If you don't mind, I'll just add a couple of things on this. First of all, I just want to say this is one of my favorite types of projects. The reason why, there's a couple of reasons for that. First of all, it's so constrained that we had to make trade-offs, good decisions. We had to look at things from many, many different angles to achieve all of the outcomes that we were trying to achieve on this. But secondly, and most importantly for me, is that the design has changed significantly due to input, not only from the residents, but from the Bicycle Advisory Committee and from the one-on-ones that we had with council. So I love projects that get better with good public involvement. As a matter of fact, I've found that with good, effective public involvement, I've never seen a project get worse. As a matter of fact, I've only seen them get better. So this will continue to be refined a little bit. And we do have some areas that were constrained more than we'd like in here. We actually reached out to the consultant to see what this would take, what it would cost if we were able to put a full-width complete street in this area. Not talking about relocation and taking houses, it just doesn't fit in here. But it would be about 60% more on the cost. And those are decisions and trade-offs that we're going to have to make in the future and some of the hard decisions that we're going to bring forth in decision trees as we're asking council to make more thorough decisions as we're moving forward with a more complete, implementable, complete streets policy in the future. I do like the suggested improvements at the intersection with Shoals Ferry Road for the bicyclist at this time. There, we got feedback from the Bicycle Advisory Committee that it was a robust conversation and with some saying that we wanted to keep the center lane and some saying that we wanted to do away with the center lane and just put in a turn lane in there. So one of the things we discussed, again, this is one of the reasons that I love these types of projects, that we discussed in a brainstorming session with the consultant today, is could we build it like this and then stripe it so that we keep the turn lane, or sorry, keep the bicycle lane and do away with the turn lane and see what the traffic is going to do? I'm not going to promise you that at this point, but I am telling you that that's the reason, that's the way that we're looking at things. And the reason for that is due to the input that we get from our advisory committees. One of the things that I say, I've been out and I've spoken with a lot of our advisory committees, and I'll be honest, when I was early in my career, I did not see the value of advisory committees. But I have changed my ways because I've learned the value of advisory committees. Because not only are they our eyes and ears to the community, but they are our mouthpieces. And they will be our mouthpieces whether or not we effectively communicate with them. So we might as well effectively communicate with them. So this is one of those projects that if it were a greenfield, it would be much different. If we didn't have the constraints, it would be much different. But because of the way that it is, our consultants, Jeff and his team, have made some really difficult, but I think really effective decisions to come to the end so that we have both safe travel and for vehicles, but also for all alternative forms of traffic. And like Jeff said earlier, we promised you Mark Rao and Jocelyn Blake, and you got us. And I want to apologize for that as well.
Thank you for that. Counselor Dugger.
Yeah, thanks for the...
Yep, sorry, Counselor Dugger.
Thanks for the update on this. I think it's much better than it was and it continues to get. And I hope to continue to see further refinement. One of the things that really sticks out in my mind about this area in particular, without getting into the minutia, is there's a lot of homes on, this is a residential street that's kind of a through street. We don't have a whole lot of those. And I do see consistently, I think this council sees consistently, and it's been happening for years, we get a lot of requests for traffic calming, particularly on residential streets. And so one of the ways I will judge this as successful is are we slowing traffic down through the design of the street, which is the best practice, right? Like not regulatory, not through speed limits, but making people feel like they're going where they need. It's 17 or 18 miles an hour sufficient instead of 25 or 30. I think about those families on that street and I want to make sure that their kids have the same access as kids on a really well-designed street, right? Like to walk and to bike and to play in their yard and to do all the things we would want our children to be able to do. And so continue down the path you're going. I think this is really good. Thank you for the update. But that's just, I wanted to put that out there. I think that's really critical, you know, that we look at the current speed and how we can get that down.
Thank you. Counselor Tivnan.
Thank you. Just a giant thank you to the team for listening to the feedback that we gave you about the trees. I know that that's, that is always a really tricky one when you're putting in some pretty substantial road improvements to have to work around something that at one point in time was deemed almost inconsequential and is now very consequential in our outlook and also to the residents of our community and in part to how we're responding to climate change. So I appreciate that that was factored in and there were solutions brought to the table that took that into account in a very serious way. So just a note of appreciation for doing that. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I've got a couple of questions. During the presentation, you all mentioned some of the decision trees that can help you weigh out how we design our streets and what we value against something else. Is that something that you could use council input on as we decide how to allocate our street space in the future?
Yes, as we develop the complete street policy into an implementable policy, yes, we will absolutely, absolutely bring back touchpoints and want counsel input on that.
Okay, yeah, I love implementable policies. Then the second point I want to make, I know I send a lot of comments over email to staff, so I don't want to get very technical in this. But I love the comment about how our streets should be adaptable and how we can experiment with different layouts of the street within the same right-of-way. So I love how we're thinking like that because I think it touches on something that the Climate Action Task Force was saying, how we need to be creative. And that's not just for funding, but it's also with how we use our public land and public space. So I love that train of thought. I agree with some of my fellow counselors that this is an improvement from the previous versions we've seen. So I'm excited about future growth and future development of this plan. And the final point is I think this could be a good presentation for the Climate Action Task Force if you haven't presented it to them yet. So appreciate you all, and I think this is going in a good direction. Thanks.
Counselor Hussin.
Yeah, thanks. Hey, friends, super appreciate this presentation.
Hey, Nadia, it's harder to hear you for some reason. I don't know if your volume on your laptop is turned down.
Okay, is this better?
Yes.
I was talking quietly. Okay, thank you for this presentation. I have one just quick question and then a comment that I want to make. When you shared your presentation, you said you're kind of planted on a preferred design alternative. Is it normal to take that preferred design alternative for another round of community engagement?
Yes, because while it's the preferred design alternative right now, we haven't got into all the details that we can really get into yet. So with preferred design alternatives, we're going to find out more as we get further into it. And we want more community feedback at this time. So we're also on the lookout for ways we can continue to improve this design. So I'd say it's becoming much more of a standard than it was in the past particularly. But that's every intention to take preferred design alternatives back out for community involvement.
Okay, and I only asked because I was like, this is looking great, like let's go. I just wanted to move. Having dealt with MSTIP funding, I'm like, let's make sure that we utilize it. I just want to echo what one of the counselors shared about designing the street in a way to ensure slowdown. And it is a major street with a lot of schools, so I want to be really thoughtful of that. And I really appreciated, you know, the agenda of all mentioning the partnership that we're having. that we're, uh, having with the Beaverton School District specifically. I feel really, really optimistic and excited to see that we're ensuring that we partner with those folks to make sure that we're building this the right way. So thanks so much.
Um, I would just say that, uh, this road is atrocious in its current design, uh, both walking and riding, and so I think all the upgrades, any of the upgrades we end up going with are gonna significantly improve not just bike and ped, but people that live there, but also facilitate cars, because they, driving through there when it's dark, it's hard, with the kind of culvers on both sides, it's hard. Um, I would just say, um, I like all, all, all the designs are an improvement, and I've made comments in the past, but I, what I do find challenging is when bike lanes end abruptly. And so I understand in the preferred one, like, that's likely the way we're gonna have to go, but I wonder about some kind of signaling on shared, when it goes into a shared lane, because it did that a lot on Fifth and Western, it just abruptly stopped, but there's no signal to the driver that the light, the lane is stopping. And so I don't know, currently, I'm thinking about other parts of the city I've been in, like, if there's just, the green boxes aren't really designed for that, that's more of an intersection, but if we could think about how we might paint a road or put a sign up or signal when bikers are merging with traffic, because bikers are very aware when the lane is ending, but some drivers are distracted, and sometimes it comes in pretty quickly. So I understand why we would, on the preferred alternative, end up potentially doing that. I just think we need to do some painting or low-cost signaling that the road is coming together.
We had a very similar discussion about that today, um, and those, those approaches that show the bike lane really merging with the traffic lane and continuing that dashing within the traffic lane for a while, so.
Yeah.
Definitely hear you, and we're gonna keep looking for improvements there.
Awesome.
And I do want to make it clear that the bike lane is not ending, it's just going into a multi-use path. So there, it, they, the bicyclists will go onto the multi-use path, but we'll make that very clear.
Okay. I, but I do think there's other parts of the city, so like, even if it's not here, somewhere else, I think we need to think about how we're, I like the idea of the dotted lane and the, the turn lanes, I mean, it happens, I've been on every single road in the city, it happens more frequently than we think, just like sidewalks abruptly ending. And I want to do a Facebook post on where the sidewalk ends in 700 places in Beaverton because it does. Awesome. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. This is your last presentation with us, are you hanging out more?
I hope I don't have another one that's coming up last minute, today was a little crazy. So please no.
Okay, we are moving on to our public hearings. Um, uh, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and making appropriations therefrom. Anyone wishing to speak on this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing will have a max of two minutes. We'll begin with a short staff presentation from the city's finance director. Oh, you popped up quick, go ahead.
I sit real close.
Okay.
So, good evening, Mayor, city councilors. Tonight, we are holding a public hearing to approve a supplement to, or an amendment to our existing fiscal year budget. The budget supplemental process is used to address changes to revenues and expenditures and maintain compliance with budget law, um, and continuity of city services. The majority of what's proposed in the supplemental, uh, budget tonight is carryover items, uh, which are items from last fiscal year that were budgeted last fiscal year but may not have been completed, and so that funding is being carried forward to complete, um, those projects or contracts that were, um, issued last year. In addition, the supplemental budget also contains some technical adjustments, so as we, um, adjust our, you know, close out our books for one year and we look at, um, the transfers to maintain, um, balance between, uh, all of our funds, we need to make sure that those, um, transfers are accurate. And so there's some technical adjustments that the finance department is making to the budget. We also have, uh, in this, recognizing some grant revenues and the associated appropriation of those funds for, um, the purposes of the grant. And there are some additional appropriations for unexpected changes, um, that have occurred after the budget adoption. Uh, and more details really are, um, explained in the agenda bill, um, is very detailed as, as to what's included. There's some very detailed attachments, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the finance director? All right. I will now open the public hearing city recorder, is there anyone here to testify?
No.
Right, there appears to be no.
I'm kind of, can I say something? I, I, I didn't register, but can I please have about two minutes for you to say?
Uh, if you fill out a card, I'll entertain it.
Okay. Thank you.
You could, you could fill out the card after, we'll, we'll allow it.
Can I do it now?
Yep, and just for those that don't know ya, your, uh, name.
Anyway, I have some, some, yeah, pictures.
To the city recorder, please, thank you.
It's basically this whole thing about, I own a building in Beaverton, and I'm just kind of noticing there's a lot of graffiti around Beaverton. And so I'm just saying that I think that we should try to keep on top of it because it'll just be a big wreck later. I know Kevin, when he was the, uh, director of the Downtown Association, there was a, a big, uh, this one fence, I'd drive by it for five years, graffiti on it, and then finally, I went to the owner of the place and said, can I just paint that? So I painted the graffiti out for them. And, uh, if you look at those pictures, but you don't have to look far to see graffiti, and people are, a lot of them are on waste management, uh, dumpsters, you know, and I don't know how to address them to get them to get this off of there. I think that if we don't do something about it, it's just gonna be worse. I was on the knack for a number of years, and at that time, they told me, you know, the more, the quicker you get rid of it, the less it's gonna happen, and that they used to have a program where this people had, the business owners or property owners had like three days to get rid of it, or else it was like a, a fine. It was either a $50 or $250 a day fine, so things got gone pretty quick. They, we've had a few other, and especially in my building, and it's still at Big's Chicken, they had a real kind of destructive type of graffiti where they etched onto the glass. It was like a paint that etched onto the glass and basically ruins the glass. We fixed it, Hazel paid half and I paid half, but it's still on Big's Chicken window, and it's been there for like over a year. Um, so I'm just saying, I don't know what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, I just think that is there something we can do about it, and I think you don't have to go very far. Did you guys get to see those pictures?
She'll hand them out to us.
Okay, but anyway, so they're, it's just all over, and I just think that if we, you know, you've seen how, yeah, just sometimes I watch a movie and when you see like a bladed area, what do they show, you know, graffiti all over, and I'm sure you guys have been to Portland as well, where we, I drive down, I said, this doesn't look too good. And so I'm just saying, I don't know if we can maybe just bring back code enforcement to kind of help people, and some of it is on city, you'll see city barricades, and even the city's not doing anything about it, so.
I'll have, I'll have, uh, Dan, our assistant city manager, do some follow-up with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you. My name, yep.
All right. Um, I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution 4858, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and making appropriations therefrom.
Hail Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, I'll just say the, the supplemental budget process, uh, I know you're do, doing things differently, and it's hard for all of us to adjust, uh, like, to the council that wasn't here before, it's probably not a big adjustment to our staff and everyone that manages a budget, how we treat supplemental and how we're doing is changing and seizing the packet that way. This is a very clear and more, uh, appropriate way of doing it, I, so I appreciate you coming in and, and helping us clean up some of this work, even though I think you met with me five times to tell me you weren't taking my money away. So that's important for us to know. With that, I'll have the recorder call the roll.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes. All right, and also for the council, it's gonna be like pop quiz, because the council president and I are gonna have different people making the motions, so we could get everyone some practice in doing it as we work towards Robert Rules of Order and other things. So tonight, uh, Counselor Duggar will be making the motion, so everyone better start paying attention, because it's gonna be somebody else's turn next. Uh, tonight, we are holding a public hearing regarding application number SV32023-00256 to vacate a segment of Southwest Third Street. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move into the substance of the hearing, I'll ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary legal matters.
Thank you, Mayor. The hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, city staff will make a presentation, followed by the applicant's presentation, which will be limited to 15 minutes. Then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak for up to two minutes each. Finally, there will be time for a response or rebuttal to the public testimony by the applicant for up to five minutes. Council members may ask questions of staff, applicants, or anyone else who testifies. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. Now I will cover the preliminary legal matters. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, comprehensive plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing this evening are Beaverton Development Code Sections 40.03 and 40.75. Any testimony that speaker's present must be directed at these criteria or at some other criteria in the code or comprehensive plan which the speaker believes should apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Only those who submit written comments or give oral testimony will give, will have standing to appeal this decision. Do any council members wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias? Okay. Let the record show there were no responses. Do any council members wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Seeing none, let the record show there was no response. Does any member of the audience wish to question the impartiality or ex parte disclosures, of which there were none, of any council member? Again, let the record show there were no responses. Does anyone wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to hear this matter this evening? Seeing none, let the record show there was no response. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, let's proceed with the staff presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Beatty, good evening, council members. My name is Steve Regner, I'm a senior planner with the city of Beaverton, and the application before you right now is a, uh, request for the vacation of a segment of Third Street, case file SV3202300256. A bit of background on the request, uh, this street vacation is actually part of a larger development proposal brought forward by Beaverton School District regarding the reconstruction of Beaverton High School, uh, shown in the image to the right there. Actually, there are nine applications in total, and all of them were, uh, considered by Planning Commission at an August 23 public hearing. Eight out of the nine of those applications were approved that night at the public hearing, and those decisions are final. The ninth application is the one before you tonight, as a street vacation application's final decision-making lays with city council. I will say, on the night of the 23rd, Planning Commission did vote, uh, to recommend to city council that they do approve this street vacation. Uh, the street vacation itself, you can see, um, in the image to the right is the yellow line, uh, a segment between, um, Southwest Fairmont and Southwest Erickson going through the western campus of Beaverton High School. A little bit of information on the proposal itself, as I mentioned, most of this has already been approved by Planning Commission. Beaverton High School is broken up in essentially two campuses, an east campus and a west campus. There will be a new academic instruction building at the northern portion of the east campus with parking and bus circulation in the center. And to the west, there will be, uh, continue to have, um, athletic fields and some modifications of parking, um, and tennis courts. The street vacation in question, um, is in the area bounded by the red box on the screen. As for the street vacation request itself, the street was actually platted back in 1940, but was never improved and remains unimproved to this day. Uh, there are no plans to improve the street to allow any public access. Um, it currently has been serving as athletic fields for decades for both the community and for Beaverton High School, and that is the plan, uh, moving forward. Uh, as staff, uh, reviewed the proposal, uh, staff looked at applicable policies of both the comprehensive plan and the transportation system plan, and found no conflicts in regards to this request. Because of those reasons, the Planning Commission did vote, uh, recommending that the council approve this request, and for those same reasons, staff is recommending that the council approve this request tonight, uh, with conditions as identified in the land use order dated August 30th, 2023, which is in the ordinance in the packet. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're prepared to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions from council? I will say, I, I had a office at Beaverton High School, and my office window looked out at the field, and I had no idea this was a road, so that's just.
It would, it would be hard to tell, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
So we just approved the downtown parks and open space plan. Is that related at all to this, or does that impact our decision-making here? Um, because in that document, there, there's shown to be a potential trail that runs right through that piece of property, um, where the street would be, and I'm not sure if that should be part of our consideration, or if it's not part, since it's not part of the comprehensive plan, um, or the land use plan, if it's not relevant.
I believe the Parks and Open Space Plan is not yet a regulatory document, so it's not something that we as staff are allowed to take into consideration. Um, there are obviously opportunities for the school district, the city, and THPRD to consider future trail access through various properties, uh, but regarding this request, um, it is not part of any adopted ordinance.
Okay, great, thanks.
Let's continue with the applicant's presentation. I mean, there's probably only three of us in the room who know who you are, so you can introduce yourself.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Steven Sparks, I represent the Beaverton School District, I'm an executive administrator for long-range planning at the district. Uh, we have read the staff report and agree with the recommendations, uh, contained therein, and we will be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay, there appear, uh, all right, now we'll hear testimony from the public. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Giving it a pause this time, no, there's not.
Thank you. Uh, there appears to be no members of the public who want to speak on this matter tonight. We'll move on, uh, to comments from staff. Do the staff or city attorney have any further comments or clarifications on the application?
I have none.
Okay. All right, do any, uh, council members have any final questions for staff? The public hearing is closed. Clear motion?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, I move to approve application SV32023-00256 and adopt an ordinance vacating a segment of South, Southwest Third Street between Southwest Fairmont Drive and Southwest Erickson Avenue.
Action.
Oh, coming from the virtual audience, it's been moved and seconded by Counsel Tivnan. Any, any more discussion?
Mayor, I've got one comment.
Go ahead.
Um, so I know I've got a lot of questions from the community over the past couple months about Beaverton High School development, and so if we've got people who are wondering why we're focusing so narrowly on just a street, it's because we're only focusing on that part of the application, and the rest of the project has already been approved by Planning, by Planning Commission. So that's why there's less conversation up here about the rest of the project, and we're focused just on that one street.
Counsel Hassan?
Just want to take a moment and let you all know that I taught in the Merrill Davies Building, which is going to be gone soon, so just want to take a moment and make sure everyone knows that as we go forward to the new Beaverton High School.
Okay, uh, with that, will the recorder please call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan? Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. We're going to move on to our work session. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I have to read the... If you'd like to appeal this decision, you must appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals in accordance with Luba rules and any applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code. Thank you. Thanks for the catch, Council President. All right, we will take a brief three-minute recess so we could reset, and... The president has seen the public works director's dog. We can resume our meeting. Okay, we got Mike, Rob, and Jim. I will not recall you the three Musketeers, but if you want to adopt that, that's all on you. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Beatty, members of council, my name's Mike Williams. I'm the economic development manager for the city of Beaverton. I'm here today with Jim McCright, executive director of the Oregon Startup Center, and Rob Rutho, who's our soon-to-be director of nonprofit services for the Oregon Startup Center. As a starting point for this work session, the three of us are here today to give you a short backgrounder on launching the nonprofit incubator within OSC. The nonprofit incubator is a collaboration between the city of Beaverton, the Oregon Startup Center, and now the Beaverton Area Chamber of Commerce. The MPI will be organized as another program within the Oregon Startup Center, which will offer for-profit and nonprofit programming and services side by side. OSC will contract with the chamber for staffing and expertise to create and deliver nonprofit programming, manage daily operations, and lead nonprofit development activities. OSC's contracting with the chamber is primarily the result of the fact that Rob Rutho, a chamber employee and the Impact Beaverton Director, has extensive experience with advising nonprofits on all aspects of governance and operations as part of a previous role at an academic center at Hamline University. The city of Beaverton will provide one million dollars in funding, and this funding is from two grants. These grants were specifically awarded to the city for the purposes of providing a nonprofit incubator in conjunction with OSC. About half of this funding is anticipated, anticipated at this point, to be used for tenant improvements to create a space for OSC and the MPI, and the other half will be used for operational expenses over the next two to three fiscal years. The city roles in this endeavor will be grant management, overall project management on space for the incubator, in connection to the community and oversight. One more slide for me. The nonprofit incubator will be located in the Beaverton Round Executive Suites on the third floor of this building. This is where OSC is currently located. Some of the grant dollars will be spent on creating a space that is inviting and functional for the nonprofits and businesses that will be using it. This will include staff offices, room for businesses and nonprofits to use on a temporary and ongoing basis, collaboration spaces for small and large teams, and spaces with great technology that allow for teleconferencing and distributed teamwork. Next, I'd like to hand over this presentation to Jim McCright. He's the executive director for the Oregon Startup Center, and he's going to speak about OSC's role in administering the center and overseeing its governance.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Oregon Technology Business Center, now known as the Oregon Startup Center, is upstairs on the third floor in the Beaverton East Suites. And as mentioned, we plan to kind of cohabitate the space upstairs after some physical improvements are made with the nonprofit incubator program. Our board has reviewed this since the proposal was first discussed about two years ago, and we are at the point of implementing an agreement with the Beaverton Chamber and their Impact Beaverton Program to staff a nonprofit program that will supplement what we do for the for-profit companies. We've found in our discussions that there are obviously a lot of needs that nonprofits have are the same as for-profit companies have when they're in the early stages of startup and growth. Everything from developing a business plan, their mission statement, building a strong board is critical, budgeting, marketing, branding, all of those are common things that nonprofit organizations, as well as for-profit companies, share. So, we think with our nineteen years' experience here in the city with the small business incubator, that we can help with the nonprofit program, offer some of those training services to help the growth and sustainability of some of the nonprofits here in the Beaverton community. So, we'll be working closely with Rob and the chamber, and we're probably signing our agreement in the next couple of days, and we'll be ready to begin the programming actually this month. So, you've seen the diagram of our current board. We've recently added a couple of people with good nonprofit experience, the chair of the Black Business Advisory Council here in Washington County, and also the chair of the Hispanic Business Advisory Board here in the county. And we're looking for one or two others with nonprofit experience to add to our board, and we'll begin cooperating and working with Rob and the chamber on developing programming and delivering of nonprofit educational training services. So, I'll turn it over to Rob, and I think he can explain more of what they have in mind for the program.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor Beatty and councilors, I'm really honored and excited to be part of the Beaverton Nonprofit Incubator. I've been thinking about this for quite some time, since I started working with Impact Beaverton about a year and a half ago. I've known about the nonprofit incubator, been working with Mike and Jim and Alicia on putting this together. It's been really exciting. Just a little bit of a timeline. We started talking about this probably a little over a year ago, but really started putting some plans into place earlier this year, looking at what would an agreement look like, how would we deliver services, where would we deliver services. Mike, obviously, has worked in working with the team and grants at the city, working out how is grant funding going to roll, how are we going to design out the space upstairs? So, they have some architectural plans that they've done that maybe, I don't know if you've seen yet, but working on those plans. The current activities that we're doing is we formulated a three-year budget for the incubator that at some point we'd be happy to share of kind of operations, expenses, and how we would grow the incubator services. We have developed initial kind of intake form for working with clients and kind of outcome measures that we would look to, to measure not only the success of the incubator itself, but the impact that we're having in the community and the nonprofits that we work with. We expect that we'll be able to start offering some programming. I also already have a list of clients that I've been working with that are nonprofits in and around Beaverton, so I already have a kind of database of seventy-five local nonprofits that I have connections with, and we'll be looking to build that. So, we can probably start doing some mild programming before the end of the year, and then starting to do more programming as the build-out continues upstairs with the executive suites, and that we would be ready to fully launch programming by quarter two of next year, with having some residents that would be, or some organizations that would be in residence here sharing space in the executive suites. We know that it's important to have a clear mission, vision, and values as a nonprofit organization. What we've put together here is just a suggested initial vision, mission, and values for our nonprofit incubator. We think it's really important to be guided by a clear set of these values, and really, the primary goal and values of this nonprofit incubator is to create a space that is welcoming and inclusive for everyone in Beaverton that wishes to provide nonprofit services. So, we want to create a space where people feel like they can come, ask questions, and get the support they need to grow their organizations and to serve their community. And in a few minutes, we'll ask for questions from you, and one of the questions we are looking for, feedback from the council and from the mayor, is on the vision, mission, and values of the organization. And then finally, just a few thoughts and notes about the programming that we would have at the nonprofit incubator. A lot of these services are going to be focused on providing technical services. How do you start a nonprofit organization? How do you build a board of directors? How do you do budgeting? How do you write grants? How do you build capacity as an organization from human resources to volunteers to others? And how do you build partnerships and collaborations that are critical for the success of nonprofits and building capacity in the community? We'll also continue to offer educational programming, both open workshops for anybody in the community, but we also anticipate having approximately four to six in-residence incubator nonprofit organizations that would be co-located here inside of the executive suites that would get more intensive services. And we would put together kind of a curriculum and cohort program for them to really help them grow and learn. From my own experience guiding the development and growth of nonprofits, I know having that collaboration, that cohort, is a very meaningful way for people to learn, and then they support each other as the organizations are growing. So, we'll have that kind of programming as well. And then we'll have just walk-in hours so that people will say, hey, I want to start a nonprofit, or I'm interested in getting some advice on building a board of directors. I'll be here, Jim will be here, and other folks will be here to help provide those walk-in services as well. So, thank you very much for your time, and we're now ready to open it up for questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the presentation tonight. It feels like an awfully long time to get here, and so I'm glad that we are in a place to move forward and get going. I'm excited to take a meaningful first step and get this off the ground. And so, the only piece of the value statement that I think, all of it, that I think needs to be added is something about prosperity and growth. Like, while it is a non-for-profit, still a lot of them have to be revenue generating. And so, having come from nonprofit world and nonprofit management, it's one of the things, as I went to business school, that I was always trying to get our executive team behind, is we can't do everything if we don't have money coming in the door. So, that would just be a suggestion. I don't have a suggestion where to add it. I just want to make sure that it's in the forefront of our mind, that generating revenue is important for these businesses to continue to operate.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your feedback.
Counselor Duggar?
Hey, can you put the slide back up with the mission, vision? Yeah. I'm going to go into a couple of points before, because I've had the pleasure of being the council liaison to the OSC for the past almost year, and I've learned a lot. I've been very lucky to do so. I've been working on this for a while, and in my mind, I actually call this the Beaverton Impact Incubator, because nonprofit is just a tax status. And what we're really talking about, the why here, is we would like our impact community, our nonprofit community, to really be able to scale and serve our community even better than they are. This is an investment in the city government, in the city community. That's a really important point. OSC has the credibility to do this, and I'm very excited about that. One thing I've learned about the vast majority of nonprofits here in the Beaverton area, they're mostly owned by women, and they're mostly owned by people of color. So, the reason I bring that up is we are baking equality of representation into this program from the very beginning. And I think that's a really important part, because this council has valued diversity. We've valued representation, and that is going to happen naturally in this. And I think that's a really important part for a community to know. You will be represented, all of you. And I think that's critical for me. I think the other thing I want our council to really consider is we give a lot of money away through the Social Service Funding Committee. And I think this is an opportunity for our Impact Incubator, I'm still going to keep calling that until it sticks, our Beaverton Impact Incubator, to really connect with our Social Services Funding Committee, both with the nonprofits that are selected, right, so we can help them scale, but just as importantly, the ones that aren't selected, so we can get them to the point of receiving funding, right, to where they're able to deliver in a way that is both impactful and meaningful. I think that's a really impactful way that we can have specific help. You guys have already gotten my feedback on the vision. I think the vision statement is good. I think, you know... I want to focus on that last question of what I think it would be successful. I think a lot of it is that, you know, you guys know better than just about any. Our general fund doesn't have capacity to continually support things, even if they're really good. So, my challenge to you, and my challenge to our corporate community, and the big companies, and the foundations nationwide, right, like, let's figure out an operating model that appeals to them. Maybe that means also looking beyond Beaverton, right? Let's find sources of funding beyond this government, right, to continue sustaining this in a way that is impactful locally, impactful to these nonprofits, and scalable. And that's success to me, is if these impact partners are able to scale and really live their mission. That's what I, that's my definition of success. Thank you for all of the work on this.
Sounds like Counselor Duggar wants you to add the word "impact" into your values.
I tried my best.
I know he's trying to name it that, but like, I don't know if anyone would know what that is, but it could be. I mean, impact is what they're trying to do, so...
Counselor Duggar, thanks for your comment. We already have a plan to reach out to the Social Service Funding Committee and the organizations. I have a list of both of those agenda bills in here from the last couple of years, and I have most of those organizations on my list already. And in terms of your comment about who we're serving with this program, I have about thirty clients, nonprofit clients through Impact Beaverton, and eighty percent of those are led by women, and seventy percent of those are organizations that are led by persons of color. So, you're spot on in terms of those percentages, and we continue, that will continue to be the case with the organizations that we serve. So, thank you for your support. We really appreciate it.
Council President?
We are supposed to do things by consensus, and my colleagues have said really impactful things. And so, I want to just echo that. I think that's really, we use sustainably a lot right now to talk about, or sustainability or sustainable in the context of environment, but I really think that maybe sustainable could be one of the values, that we're helping build sustainable nonprofits, because I think, I mean, probably in startups as well, you are very taxed emotionally. But I think people who get involved in nonprofits are just so, so giving of themselves, and so, really helping to build that sustainable community, I think, is really wonderful. And I also really love that concept of that success would look like, how can we help make this program sustainable into the future, beyond just the program funding that we have right now. I'm really excited to see it get going. I think there is a really good symbiosis. I remember talking to you, Rob, months and months ago, and you had so much enthusiasm and passion, and I was like, whoa, Rob, where's this coming from? What are you talking about? And so, it's really exciting to see this come to life. And I think that, I see a lot of council's goals and feedback really reflective in the plan that you have all made, so I'm very excited about that. I think my only question is around, you know, with the inclusion, and like, knowing that we've got a super diverse group of folks running nonprofits, how are we being informed? And I saw you have two open board member spots. Is there recruitment for that board member, those board member openings to kind of help make sure that we're also really informing ourselves as that incubator on how we can best serve this diverse community coming to us?
And I can address it. One of the things that we intend to create that I didn't talk about is an advisory board that would include some members of the OSC board, but also several kind of at-large members from the community that can help inform the programming and make sure that we're doing outreach to communities that might be underserved. We know that we have good services in the community for people who speak English and Spanish. We could do more to serve our Vietnamese community, and our Korean-speaking community, and our Chinese-speaking community, and several others, Arabic included. One of the things we have planned to build into the room upstairs is we'd redesign it as kind of a multi-learning language space, so that we can communicate maybe with translators or without, to be able to reach all the members of our community regardless of their language, and even being able to serve those that may not have, you know, a lot of the immigrants and others that live in this community may not have fully written, be able to read full text, and so, the ability to work with them as well. So, we're fully cognizant of all that. We appreciate your comments. The other thing about the financial sustainability, we have that built into our budget for the incubator for the first three years of creating a sustainable model that creates funding from many different sources, not coming back to your budget every year, Mayor. We certainly understand that, and we would certainly carry that kind of mentality over to the organizations we work with. I have a sheet of nonprofit incubator measures of success right here, and the very first one is funding balances diversity, right? How do you do this over time so you're not going back to the same bucket over and over again? Because for most nonprofits, that's not a sustainable model. So, thank you very much for your time and insight, and for your support. Appreciate it.
Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. The first that I want to make, and I know I've shared this with you all, but I just want everyone to hear it, like, the dream, which you already talked about, right, which is like partnering with social services funding. I'd love to make sure Kenya, who I can see is listening, like, our equity officer, like, there's this holistic partnership that we're really ensuring that nonprofits are building up. I know we talk about, you know, the data in terms of BIPOC data. I'd like eventually to make sure we're aggregating that data to identify, like, we're seeing this in Asian America, and we're seeing this in African American. I do want to, I want to support what my fellow councilor said, but I'm hoping for their support on, just some comments on the vision, mission values, which I guess is maybe why I should have gone first, but hopefully they'll head nod or thumbs up for you, since I'm not actually there. I'd just like to see a little bit of stronger language around sort of our commitment to, you know, dismantling systems, like acknowledging that, you know, there are folks with power and privilege that are able to have access to more, and that our commitment really lies in ensuring that folks that don't traditionally have access are able to have access. And to the mayor's point, you know, that we strive for economic prosperity, not just for businesses and organizations, but for our community members. So, I do think this is like a beautiful first round. I just, I think calling out more specifically, potentially, like, the groups that we're looking to serve, when we say underserved, like, do we want to explicitly say, like, people of color, LGBTQ, people with disabilities, neurodiverse communities, et cetera, et cetera? I'll let you all decide on that. But I do just think it's a really happy vision and mission, and I love it, and we need to do more. And so, I think... And so I think of like, what of our diversity statements look like, or what our climate statements look like, and the statements, I think, that really matter are the ones that say, like, to actively dismantle systems that have, you know, traditionally excluded groups and partners from participating, by ensuring that nonprofit organizations have access to equitable access to programs and services. So just kind of something for you to think about. I know you can probably see other people, I cannot see other people, but hopefully there's some head nodding or some sort of support, and I'll let other councilors share. But thank you so much for making the time to talk about this, and for the time you spent with me offline as well, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Hassan, we appreciate it.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, thank you. I had the opportunity to be the liaison to OSC during the rebrand and the early work on this, and I haven't been there for the last year, so it's exciting to see all of the developments and advancements that you've made with this, and mission, vision, value statements are what I work on in my day job. So I selfishly wish that I could have been in the room just to hear how those conversations unfolded, but a couple of comments on them, since you're asking for it. So with the vision statement, you know, thinking about that it's an aspirational statement but achievable, this feels like that, but there's something about location that seems like it might be missing here. With the mission statement, Beaverton is mentioned in there as being kind of the epicenter of why this incubator exists here, and not that I'm saying it has to be just affecting and impacting residents in Beaverton, but thinking through, is that the end goal, or is it that this is something that can have a broader impact over time? This nonprofit incubator is pretty unique, and there's really nothing like it anywhere in our region, and from what I understand, around the country, there's not a lot of opportunities that exist like this to help individuals that are, that have an idea, have a dream for how they can create impact in their community, and equip them with the tools they need to be successful in doing that. I love that this is a homegrown thing that's coming out of our city, and I kind of love the idea that it could be something, as to your second question, down the road, an example that others could take and run with. And so does our impact stay here locally, or does it turn into kind of what happened with the Startup Center, where, yes, we're helping businesses locate here, but their impact can branch out and benefit others beyond? So that's just something that maybe gets explored. And the last thing I'll say is regarding the values, given that those are, you know, above all, we value these things, and they're, as the leaders of the organization, you're committing to protecting and upholding those values, it would be great if we could drill down just one level beneath each one of those statements to really coax out exactly what we mean when we say respect or inclusion, and just have some sort of a qualifying sentence that gives direction both to the existing board members and leaders of the incubator, as well as the participants and the ones that are benefiting from it, and what those values really mean, and then just for future folks that might be interested in it as well. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tivnan. We actually had that discussion yesterday in a meeting that we had about drilling down and actually doing some definition of what we mean by these values, and kind of tying together a comment that you and Counselor Hassan had about the scope and impact of this and making sure we're reaching all the different parts of the community. The research that I've done around here, a lot of the nonprofits that serve Beaverton also serve Washington County, they usually see their service areas not just here, so we certainly do see, and that has to do with both reaching communities that have been underserved, I mean, sometimes people outside of Beaverton, outside of Hillsborough feel like we don't get the same services that some others do, so we certainly see that and recognize that, and expect to have this to have impact throughout the region. So, appreciate your comments and your insight and your support. Thank you so much.
Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you all. I really echo the comments about sustainable being a key value. I know, I led a nonprofit before, and it's a very hard world to live in, just with burnout and financial sustainability, and a sustainable base of volunteers, or team members, or staffing, like, all of that's just really hard in the nonprofit world. So sustainability is really important for me there. Counselor Tivnan mentioned location being a key priority, and that is the same for me too, at least so long as the city is funding it. I think it would be great to have focus on Beaverton impact. There's that "impact" word again. I'm not sure how that overlaps with Impact Beaverton, the program of the Chamber, so I wouldn't want to like, step on any toes of branding or anything there. Success looks like, success for me looks like financially sustainable organizations, nonprofits, and a nonprofit incubator. It looks like nonprofits that are growing to the point that they are not wanting to be part of the program anymore, and are ready to move out on their own, and open up space for other newer nonprofits to take that space. And then for those programs that, for those nonprofits that outgrew the space or that have moved on, hopefully staying engaged in some sort of mentoring role or advisory role. I think we can get that, I think we got the right people on the job for this. For those of you who don't know, Rob has years and years of experience teaching about nonprofit management in universities and colleges, and working with nonprofits, and I think the partnership with Impact Beaverton there and the Oregon Startup Center will be really good. So I'm ready, and I'm excited.
Thank you, Counselor Teeter, appreciate it.
I think the technical term for what you're saying is dance with the one that brung ya, so make sure we have him come back around, so. Awesome. Well, thank you, gentlemen, we're super excited. I also have the big check from the Congresswoman in my office, and when you guys have your space done, I would love to bring it down for you guys to hang up down there. So, please get it done quickly and invite us to the ribbon cutting.
You will definitely be invited. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Have a good day. All right, we are down to our last item, council new business. Council President in there first.
Okay, thank you. We heard from, or we talked about vacating a street today, and I know it was to serve the bigger purpose of the school campus, but there was other transportation conversations tonight, and Denny Road was one of them. I had a couple situations this weekend about pedestrian safety. One is at our favorite intersection of Farmington and Watson. I was helping a gentleman find his car after the farmer's market, and we were crossing at First and Watson, and a car, you know, comes speeding across Farmington, as they do, and I yelled at him that the speed was 20, as I do, and, you know, he flipped us off and then punches the gas to get past us. And so this is just my reminder to our community that, like, when you're in a car, be aware, like, our road design, we're working on it, right? We're working on creating our complete streets, on creating an environment that is really safe for everyone, but the reality is, as drivers, we have a responsibility to be aware of the bikes on the road, to be aware of the people walking or using mobility devices. And I had a message from a constituent about this area and something similar happening to them, so a call, and for us all to be a good example to our community, to just be aware, when we're in a car, we could easily hurt or kill someone, and I believe as a pedestrian, I had a right to be angry that the person was hitting their gas as I was crossing the street. I didn't feel like he had a right to be angry at me and the elderly man that was walking with me for being in the crosswalk. The other thing, though, that's also related, is that Jean and Jessica were at the farmer's market this weekend doing research, and if you happened to see them, Jessica was wearing a stoplight costume, and it was really cool, but they were helping spread the word about getting people onto our Transportation Advisory Board, which the application closed yesterday, or on Sunday, but it was really fun, so I just had to give them a shout-out.
Thanks. Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, thanks. I actually also got to see staff at the farmer's market, and I love the traffic lights. So Council President, thanks for bringing that up, that was super sweet. I just want to take a minute and acknowledge that there's a lot going on around in the world, and there are a lot of folks in our community specifically that have been impacted. This is probably more for others, but for you all to know, for those of you who are struggling or suffering, we see you, we acknowledge your pain. There's a lot of fear right now, and we just wanted to let folks know that they're not alone. You know, this council, myself, this group, we're here with folks who might be struggling. We can show up in whatever ways you need. I also want to just call out the hotline for reporting bias. There's been some instances that have happened in our community, so if you don't know, you can do a search for the Department of Justice Reporting Bias to the hotline, and just so you all know, that phone number is 1-844-924-2427, and so if you're struggling with anything or anything's going on, please make sure you make that phone call, and if you're just struggling with mental health, 988 is a really good phone call. Thank you.
All right, with that, I call tonight's meeting.